Oh wow.
Good evening, it's uh time for our budget work session here, um would you please call the meeting to order? We shall. Well, yeah, I call the meeting to order, will you please take role? Sorry.
No, uh councillor Gray.
Here.
Councillor Schmidt.
Here.
Councillor Pointer. Here. Councillor Dedrick.
Here.
Councillor Sherbry.
Here.
We're all here, and so let's just get right at it.
So the first item we want to talk about as we're preparing this budget, uh the council have additional questions regarding the street sweeper replacement. Uh you wanted to have Jason here to talk about that with him, so Jason is here tonight and we can do that. Um discussion and see if it's going to be included in the budget or what we're going to do, so not sure how you guys want to proceed with that.
Well, I think some of the questions that came up is. How often we're using it, is there a way to maybe not use it quite as often to extend its life again?
Yeah.
And those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Cause I know it's quite a large budgetary item, not saying that it's not needed, but. Don't know if we can pull it off this year, so we're just balancing all of our eggs right now.
So I think the big thing where we could cut some hours down is. If we have a hard start and finish on our lead pickup, cause two hundred and. I'm gonna say two hundred and eighty of those hours, they go on that thing here, our lead pickup.
Okay.
So I try to sweep the whole town before each holiday, so that would be Memorial Day, Fourth of July. And then if we have any special events, we try to do, and then it's always the Friday morning downtown route.
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of what the schedule is, and then a lot of times if I have a one man job, you know, if I got somebody out on vacation, it's a good filler for. For those, those spots there, it's just a one man, one man job. So, I mean, we're hoping to maybe get Matt over just a little bit more often with the uh wastewater helping out on. On his days of workout best for preparing, um there's a possibility that, you know, we can, we can work some stuff out there to come back a few hours on one man day jobs and just pull them out there. So, that's, that's a possibility, but a big thing would be me is if, if we do on lead pickup. Um say, hey, we're gonna go from October fifteenth instead of the first or something like that, lose two weeks off of that front side. That's tough though too, cause a lot of times we run the sweeper because we don't run the stacker with it to keep the leaves cleaned up as we're. As we're moving forward, so we don't.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
Or, cause it used to be the, the, the stacker you call it.
Yeah, yeah.
Used to do that first and, and try to get all that cleaned up, so you're not wearing and tearing on the, the broom itself, right?
Well, so in the early on, but most of the time we won't run the stacker and if it's, if the leaves are light, cause we can pick all that up with the sweeper. Good, so when, but then we, you know, obviously, like I said, we could just do, hey, this is what it's gonna be for the main pickup. And not, not hit it as hard in that first couple of weeks and possibly take some of that away. It's just so hard to judge the lead pickup, cause some years at the first of October, it's, they're dropping like crazy, some years it's. So it, and then it extends on, you know, a little bit further, it's probably closer to eight weeks, would you say Tim now? That we're really, cause we'll just bubble up till Thanksgiving where it's only scheduled till.
We used to always have snow by Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
It seems like the seasons are a month off.
Right.
Yeah, I think we talked this year about maybe starting it a little bit later.
Yeah.
Coming, this coming here.
Start just like a week later maybe, which would, it would save, you know. On average, weeks probably thirty-five hours, actually, I'm, I'm forty hour week, it's not an actual, it's not actually forty hours by the time you think of it, they get, they get everything ready to go is.
Oh, and. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it wasn't just about the man hours, it was.
Machine hours.
The machine hours, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
So the question becomes then, if you don't do it as often, is it harder on the machine? You know, do we do better to do it in smaller? Smaller amounts more often, or is it, I don't know what's best on the machines, and so to me. It's not as much the man hours as it is the machine, and so can you answer that question?
So, I would say, I mean, obviously, the more you run it, the more that, you know, the chance of things that are gonna happen with it or, or stuff like that. And it's wear and tear on the brooms, the brooms to switch them all night and the stuff, but. I don't necessarily think that it would make a big difference either, you know, if they got cut down a hundred dollars a year or something like that. If, if we could shave that off, but I wouldn't see where that would make a big difference on not running, you know, not running the machine, so. I just don't know how much harder it was in the machine.
Is there a difference in machines too, Jason, that would be? Parts that are more acceptable to grab from, say, an implement dealer close by, Norby's Fire Department Lead or Dyson's? Or all machines, well, like on the fire trucks, you were pretty limited to what you can get the exact part.
The one machine that I am looking at, a lot of the, a lot of fittings, our farm store fittings on, or the machine that we have now. Is, it's like a fire truck, you pretty much, it comes through their, through their warehouse.
And that's the expensive part, through their warehouses.
But, it's, I mean, I don't know, like a lot of those fittings, they don't get changed a lot, it's, it's a good sales point for them, but. Uh that's like their, your uh water fittings for pretty wet and everything, there's a lot of that stuff, and that's their big sale was that, hey, you can go right out here in Norby's and get the fittings for this truck, cause we're. So.
I think part of the challenge we're running into with this piece of equipment is the electrical.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily mechanical, it's all the electrical wires.
Yeah.
That are running through it, and so there tends to be more little crenlins we're dealing with.
And that's the after, that's the, that's the sweeper manufacturer part of it, that's not, you know, it's not a Peterbilt chassis, it's, it's actually a pack car, but. It's, it's on that chassis, which we haven't had an extreme amount of trouble with the, with the chassis part of it itself, it's been the wiring part of the sweeper. Has been the, and that's the manufacturer, so those, their, their, um. Their warranties, like it would be, if it were a big liner truck, freight liner warranties, the chassis, if it's Elgin. Thing, then Elgin warranties, so you know, they, there's a kind of a dividing line of who takes care of what, and. Yeah.
Does the current sweeper's a nineteen?
It's a seventeen, seventeen, yeah, yeah, you know. It's actually in the, in the schedule that we've had, we've always had a ten year schedule of replacement. And it's, it's actually about two years ahead of that schedule, and the reason was is because a lot of the maintenance issues that we're having, this electrical stuff that. Is why we're looking at, you know, maybe this is literally time to move it down, but.
So if we use it half the amount of time, we'd have near as much maintenance?
I mean.
I don't know how much, how much is of it sitting is the problem too.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that, yeah. No.
And it's not really maintenance, it's mostly electrical.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not mechanical, it's electrical.
Right.
Okay, as far as the electrical goes, um you know, have you had to do, I know you've had to do some repairs, so.
Yeah.
Oh, and uh probably the last few years you've had to do that.
Yes.
What, what are you, what were we spending for?
So, um the last, from the stuff that I pulled, what wore up. From twenty-two to twenty-four, we spent about twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in repairs, which not all of that has been. Um.
Electrical.
Electrical, yeah, but that's, that's, that's what we have from, and prior to that, um. Like in twenty twenty-one, there was about thirty-eight, roughly thirty-eight hundred dollars, twenty-one to twenty-two. Um. About the same there too, then like I said, is twenty-two to twenty-four is when it really started to jump up and.
So that's five years, five years into some major, starting to get into some major trade, so what I'm worried about is spending three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And getting five more years and we're right back into, are, are we gonna be right back into this kind of stuff again?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's a huge, a huge expenditure for.
Oh, yeah.
For a piece of equipment that only does one thing.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's for my heart and that.
Oh, yeah.
That's where it's hard for me to justify.
Yeah.
You know, can we, you know, like we had game tonight, just a gentleman brought in, you know. Uh interest on that's gonna be around twenty, twenty-five thousand a year.
Yeah.
Can we all, you know, instead, you know, have a pair, have, have somebody come in there and actually do a, a complete. Overall and electrical and try to get that done and, and melt this along for another three or four years.
Yeah.
You know, that's where I'm, you know.
Yeah.
Well, we probably can do, the issue we run into is where our last opportunity comes, if it's in the shed being worked on, it means it's not.
That's not getting operated.
Yeah, and so it depends when that comes into play, we'll tell when we have a lead pickup. A little bit of a chill now.
What kind of uh preventive maintenance do you guys do on it? Do you guys send it in for any work done in the winter time when we're not needing it?
If we need to, we will, we'll send it down to Ankeny, down to, you know, if there's things that, that are above us that we, but for the most part. I mean, all the servicing and all that stuff's done in-house, like we don't, any of that stuff, but once it gets into the wiring. Or, or anything with those, you're pretty much, you know, it's, it's literally a rat's nest, if I showed you guys when you open the dry, the bums of stuff, it's, yeah, it's, so.
The challenge is, we don't really know if we, maybe we got one that a little more defective than others.
Right.
You know, it's.
How do you know? I mean, and it is no doubt about it, it is a, it's a highly, it's in the dirt and sand, I mean, it's, it's basically a sand blaster, so it's. You know, and, and I will say, I mean, I, I think that ours probably, I've seen a lot of used ones around it, and it. It probably gets as good a care as what, which, what we can give it as far as what it's doing, the guys. They, they do what we're supposed to do, keep it washed out and, you know, run the water with it when we're sweeping, so.
Just a very corrosive.
It is, yeah, it's just, it's kind of nature of the beast with them, it really is, and I think it's, you know, doing what it does, um. I wish I was a better answer, I really, I really do, I.
And I wonder how much of the advancements have been from twenty seventeen to now as far as.
They say they've made some changes on this model that we have, I mean, wiring wise, uh electrical wise and that kind of thing, cause believe me. They know that I'm not happy with this.
Right.
Uh that's been voiced to a plenty of times, that, that this shouldn't be uh a piece that's this expensive, we shouldn't have these kind of. Of issues, believe, believe me.
Yeah, wiring, wiring is the worst.
Oh, yeah.
It's just so bad.
So intermittent, it'll, it'll kick a light on and then it's, then it's out, you know, and then when he gets up here, he chases it, I mean, it. It's nothing for him to go up here and, I mean, spend a full day coming out of Ankeny or, and a lot of times they are good about it, they'll try to piggyback if they're coming out of the view or something. Catch us so it doesn't hit us quite as hard on trip charge or things like that, but, yeah, it's.
Well, and if you can imagine, like the semis running up and down the road, I worked for XL Traders. And the marketing manager, I was always screaming at Grody because, you know, we all, lights would just eat up with this liquid salt on there, it just, the brine would just eat them up and.
Yeah.
I, I screamed at them all the time, you know, we gotta get this wiring fixed, you know, finally they came to Greasable. So all the techs, you plug them together and squirt grease and they actually come up with and develop some really good stuff to, to help out. So hopefully the advancements.
And this is where, this is where these two pieces of, of where the chassis comes together with the broom, that's where this wiring movement comes together, and that's where the worst of it is, it's. I wish I could take a picture of it, just showing you, because it is, it is literally, I guess that is, is a, like, you open it and make sure you have it spiced almost, it's like, I don't even know where you would start trying to. Diagnose what wires, and it's kind of looped up in, in the side box and.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's.
What is the time frame to order and receive one?
So, even if, even if we would say, hey, we're gonna move forward with this, we're, we won't use that machine at all this year. Like on an Elgin right now, we would probably be, if we said yes today, it would be a year from now. So that's the big thing that, that really you have to be looking at is, a Timco is a little bit, a little bit uh better than that, but probably. Uh four or six months leading time on, on that.
And we lock in the price the, the day we just pull the trigger on it?
Yeah. Now you're.
Considered too with the way your things are going.
Yeah, your trade, you know, obviously is, is something, we're still on, it's, it's not like, you know, the same. If it decides it's gonna do something and we got a fifty thousand dollar bill on that thing.
Mm-hmm.
You just lost seventy-five thousand of, of the trade in of it, this is.
So we can trade this one in?
Yeah, yeah, this, what I got, and these numbers aren't exact, but each, we would basically have about three hundred thousand out of. What trade in ours is in, but the machine's about three seventy-five, so we'd be basically right around, right, and those are, they're not hard numbers, but these are, they're, they're close numbers to that three hundred thousand. This is where we, where we pretty much.
Our cost.
Our cost, yeah, I mean. True, that's trading.
Right.
The sweeper we have.
Do you buy the chassis stuff or?
No, it, it comes, they, it goes to the manufacturer, so that, like, if it's a Timco sweeper, they buy a freight liner chassis, and if it's an Elgin, they, they supply the chassis.
Could you repeat that, I mean, what you just said about the trading, how much of the trading would we get?
We'd get seventy, roughly seventy-five thousand off, off of our sweeper, so.
If all goes well.
If all does.
If all, yeah.
Based off of current numbers.
In condition.
Yeah, cause you know, you wait one more year, you're one more model year old, meaning you're getting less money on it, that one's gonna be more expensive, so. And I heard the numbers are right, when we did. The sterling for this, for this one. That was about right at ten years on that one, and I think we ended up getting about twenty, the times were a little bit different, but I think we ended up getting about twenty-five thousand out of that one.
About ten, yeah.
So.
So at least it's three hundred grand. And we're, we're looking, I mean, do we have the bottom for that, or?
What I, what I did, it's in the budget right now, and I transferred um. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand out of road use tax, uh and there was still some in road use tax to the street equipment reserve to, um. To help pay for that, three hundred and twenty, so I had to transfer um from road use to, to the street. Equipment reserve, which is where we would pay for the truck from, so then that brings your balance down um. On the road use tax fund to, and what the sheet I'm looking at right now is the sheets.
Okay.
Um, it's in your budget sheets too, this, this sheet is like your check register, your checkbook. It showed you the beginning cash balance, our actual cash as of July one twenty-four, so the start of this fiscal year, that was what was in our bank account. Six point two eight million when you total it all up, then I take, um, I take what we're reestimating revenues, reestimating expenditures. To come up with a projected cash balance as of June thirty twenty-five, the end of this fiscal year. Then I plug in the budgeted revenues and budgeted expenditures that we're proposing. For next fiscal year, twenty-five and twenty-six, to come up with our projected cash balance at the end of next fiscal year, which is June thirty twenty-six. So, cause on the, on the big reports here that we'll go over later, these just show the expenditures and revenues for the year, they don't show the running balance, so. So you can see road use tax is, it starts with one one zero, it's about a third of the way, quarter, third of the way down. And you can see the balances in that fund, and so when we get to the budget sheets, you'll see where I took three hundred and twenty thousand out of there to transfer it into. The street equipment reserve fund, which is funds zero two one, so it's a few above that one one ten. And then projected spending three hundred and seventy-five on the sweeper, which brought that fund down to about a little over, little, not quite five thousand. So, and that fund is really where we just, it's a, a tracking mechanism for us for where we, where we purchase equipment out of. Um and then if he sells like scrap metal or signs or things like that, those receipts go into that street equipment reserve to be used towards a vehicle as well. So it does, it does bring our road use tax balance down. A fair amount, down to one twenty-seven, four ninety-five, but we do get monthly revenues into that from, um, from the state. That are around fifty to sixty thousand. A month, so it, you know, it will replenish, plus if, if we are gonna get seventy-three thousand, that's gonna also reduce. Probably the amount I need to transfer, you know, if it's only three hundred thousand, they're not gonna need to do that full three hundred and twenty.
Well, that'd be great, you could make it work that way, so we don't have to run our money.
Yeah, yeah, no, we wouldn't, it's just, I just want everyone to understand that we're gonna, you know, road use will recoup, but it, you know, we.
Let's move through here.
It's gonna take a hit, cause we, we, we started this fiscal year with five hundred and forty-two thousand in the road use fund. Which, and then you have your revenues and expenditures. And so if we buy the sweeper, it's gonna, it's gonna deplete it, we can probably do. You probably figure there'd be seventy-five thousand more in there if we're getting that seventy-five on trade, so it'd be about two hundred thousand we'd end with, so.
And that's if we did it this year.
If we did, the upcoming piece.
Right.
Budget year. Do you have to put a deposit down or anything like that?
We never have, it's always been, we sign off.
Part of the trade, part of the trade.
Yeah, probably, yeah, we sign off on it, we're gonna do, we're gonna do a first agreement.
First agreement and then.
Yeah, yeah, then we're pretty much bound to it at that point, then of, you know. But then we're gonna take the sweeper because of the manufacturing part of this.
Right.
And then we have the cam, we have the camera trailer.
That's in the sewer budget.
It's down into the sewer budget, yeah. So, I put them in, we can always take them out, depending what the council says, but just so you guys have an idea of, okay, this is the impact that expenditure would have. On the funds, I want you to see it in there so that you know.
So in the event, cause I've seen this happen before with fire trucks, I believe, when we went to order something and they get delayed. And who knows with everything going on in the world right now. We're saying potentially twenty-five, twenty-six, but if it gets pushed back, it could go into our next budget year as well.
Yeah.
It just gets carried over then.
Okay.
But at least we're tied to the cost though.
Right.
Right, so that's, the price is a big thing, that price lock.
The only thing that would fluctuate is that trade.
Yeah.
Something.
Well.
Well, that's just gonna go down.
The, the trade's just gonna go down.
Right.
The cost of the, the product, so it's a metal, the cost of metal or rapper, whatever shoots the roof, then your price on that unit's gonna go up as well.
Yep, if we don't order it now.
If we don't order it now.
Yeah.
And, and based off of what we've seen going on since beginning of the time, nothing ever got cheaper.
No, it's gonna go up three to five percent.
Really, it's just.
One big thing I've had people tell me is, they like that we sweep the streets, people ride motorcycles, I don't. People ride a lot of bicycles, and they hit that little bit of sand in the spring after it gets nice, and it's just like.
I, I, Tim knows my comparison to this, is I, when I started to count. Whether there was one road, one car that went up a gravel road, or whether it was five hundred, that street wants to see a street sweeper. And, you know, citizens like that because they think, you know, hey, we're, this is our tax salary, the one, two, the street's clean, every Friday it's downtown sweeping up, you know. So it's, it's a hard thing to, I'm not saying that we can't cut that kind of, I mean, it can definitely be cut back some, but it's just a hard thing to, to take away like that.
One thing that would definitely help with that is if um people in the community would kind of clean up in front of their curbs a little bit. I do it all the time with mine, I blow all my stuff back up into the yard and.
Matter of fact, unfortunately.
Yeah, I know, but they did, and I, I didn't, you know.
I feel that it's my responsibility, I clean my own leaves up, I clean my own stuff up, and I, I help.
That would make our stuff go longer.
And I, I just, I don't, I don't wanna push that burden off into the street, I just don't, I, I've always felt.
Yeah.
And it's hard on storm sewers too.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're right in that part of town where they finish their hardies wrapper, they finish their thing and then help them out. It's like you're, you're not far away, those are the things that. And most people just don't take it upon themselves to, to take that stuff.
Well, I would hope if we got this new sweeper that we wouldn't be using it as much as using the ones getting worn out, cause that's why it's getting worn out, cause it gets used too much. I would hope that he could cut that, I mean.
Yeah.
Seriously. I think we've got to do it, we got to do it now before it goes up anymore.
Those are my decisions that have to be made.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying.
We don't have it, so just like. So let's go back to the council, to make.
No, 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 we've got a long way to go, but.
Right.
But I don't wanna take it out and then come back and try to put it back in later on, right now.
I'd love to just leave it in for now, and if we gotta, if we gotta take it out for some reason.
And, and if it, if it does, it does, I mean, well, you know, there's gonna be some maintenance or repairs in it, it's, it's a year down the road, like I, I get, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's just the hard sell, because of the, you know.
Yeah.
De- dedicated unit doing one single thing, but, you know, that, it, it's hard to justify that.
Yeah.
You know, unlike the, you know, the canine unit where, you know, if we discontinue the canine, you can still use it for a squad car where. You know, that one, you sweep with it, and that's a. I, yeah, I mean, that, that was our, at least my concern, that's why I wanted to talk to you.
Oh, yeah.
Get your feel and, and then try to get all this wrapped up.
Yeah. It's, like I said, it's, it's just a high maintenance piece, there's no, it was, I, no matter what brand it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna do the same thing, it's gonna be in the dirt.
There's some building better than others.
Yeah.
Sometimes you got a bad unit.
Well, yeah, that's.
Yeah, we don't, man, we.
Monday, Friday.
And, yeah. And the one we're gonna be doing is, is exactly the same, or is it?
I'm looking at two different options, actually, I'm looking at a different brand even than, than what we have now.
What you have?
Yes, you know, and that's the other one that I'm looking at, is actually, it's the one that, that said, you know, you have to go to the farm store and get the fittings for at least the water part of it and some of those things.
The cost, so. Have you talked to, overall, like Cedar Rapids types cities, the big ones that are doing it all the time, are they running a different brand than we are, or is it all?
I was just in Key West. And it's, it's, if anybody's been there, you know what it's like, I mean, there's cups and there's, they're down there and they're running, they're running two of these Timcos, that, that's the brand that I'm. That I'm working at down there, I actually, I watched down there, I mean, they're, they're, they do the same exact thing, but I never got a chance to talk to any, you know, anybody who was there, but. That's the brand, the other brand that I'm looking at from, from the Elgin, what ours is, so, just to give you an example, but they're, the things run. If they don't run twenty-four seven in Key West, I'd be shocked, I mean, they, because it's just so, there's so much going on down there, you know, but.
Plus the sand.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah.
Did we have the garbage?
Did we have one prior to the, the one we had?
That was an Elgin also, you know.
How long did we get out of that one?
That one, I think we were right at ten and a half there, yeah, yeah, so, and I'm not, this, I, I fully think this will go ten. But do I think it will be, you know, are we gonna have, but, you know.
Well, it can, it can be cobbled the last ten years, but I mean, at that point, time, fuck, figures crap you're after.
You know, it's just, and we'll have to start increasing our maintenance costs.
Right.
Yeah. And that's the hard part to know. Who, who knows what's gonna, I mean, I wish we had a crystal ball and we could say that it was gonna cost, by a column, that we're gonna be.
Well, that's just the same thing as a car or somebody dirt bike or Harley or something like that, I mean, you keep nickel and diamond, when you say, you know, it's time to just go get a different one, you know.
Well, I think another thing is. Uh, it, it fit in to the slot right now and.
We don't do any other purchases.
Yeah, and if we picked it down the road, it doesn't pile up in another spot where we, you know, when I started here, we had that problem, it was. Backhoe, in loader, dump trucks, it would be, I mean, it was like we, we were in a bad spot at that point, and it was. So that's just another.
That was another question I was gonna ask, are we going to be coming up against some else, high that you, in the salt, salt spreader?
Yeah, be another, you know, but it, it just goes into that rotation, so it just keeps it bumps.
You have an equipment replacement schedule.
Right, but the, the salt truck or whatever, that's not gonna go at the same time as this, if we do this, this uh sweeper now.
We won't worry about bumping into the next one.
Right.
But that's the challenge we run into, because the salt spreader is one that, the mineral you're using, it's.
It's ten year.
Well, and it's one of those things where you just gotta look out, I mean, if everything's on a ten year replacement, I'm guessing it's.
We have the, the actual.
Dump trucks are fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I actually think we might spread them out to twenty, and that's just our regular dump trucks.
And, and the unloaders, I think we're fifteen to twenty.
Yeah, so, and that's kind of, I just have a, I have a, a replacement list, so I have it in the years of. Of where those land at to try to keep it so we're not getting piled up on it.
Yeah, with, with the equipment we have, and we have like three million dollars in value. So we try to keep the replacement schedule flat, so we don't see any spikes, and that's the way we've scheduled it out. And just so we haven't just fit in this year without us having to do something, hopefully something else.
Mm-hmm.
And so this worked, if it's something we wanna do, uh, we can push it off, it's, it's not a problem, it may affect something else later on down the road, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Yeah. No, I said, I, I hear that, the whole thing's so confused, it's dollars and cents, if you have to make.
Well, I was kind of hoping you'd come, it's like, I mean, you're the expert on the situation, and, and Tim, you guys know when you're gonna have to replace things and how often, all the other stuff, like, hey. Is this a year to do it?
Yeah.
You know, because of what's coming down the road, or is it better for us to push it down one more year and, and try to, I mean, what's, what's gonna be the easier route here?
And the thing is, is that even if we order it now, it's a year down the road.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
I mean.
That's the thing we need to verify and clarify as well, but the, uh, I just get one turn around here. Cause they, they only have them sitting on lots of places, first people now.
Right.
I know what they're saying now.
Lead time on the, on the Timco would be probably four to six months and the Elgin is, is pretty close to a year. So, depending on which, which route we ended up going, so, yeah, I mean, it would, we wouldn't use it this whole sweeping season.
Either way, doesn't matter.
Either way, we'll, we'll be running the old one this, this upcoming sweeping season, so. Yeah, I mean, there is a potential with that M code that you would maybe see it, but.
Probably bigger.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but it would be, you know, and at that point, it's, you know, you, you have to look at it then, cause there isn't a big long warranty with them, is it, is it better to actually wait? And take delivery of it, when it goes into, so we have a full season of, of rolling.
Oh, right, there, it's only a year.
One year.
One year.
Or probably.
One year fifty.
That's my fifty feet. That has been my, my sale in the multiple times, but.
This is all the brother. One year, not, not ours, it's yours, right?
Yeah. And it's tough too, because it's really not a year, we sweep with it for.
Seven, eight months.
Yeah.
So, just like campers, you got a one year warranty in most campers and you ain't using that camper for a year, so.
Any further questions for Jason today?
Thanks, Jason. Yeah, thanks for us, thanks, Jason.
What I hear in your direction is we'll keep it in the budget pretty now, we'd still have to make a final decision later on, yep.
Okay.
What I will believe then, if we are keeping it in the budget for the time being, I will make that adjustment on the, um, to account for that seventy-five thousand dollar trade in.
True.
That we've got, so I'll, I'll make some adjustments, I see those numbers, so it'll help the ending by balances, if you feel comfortable that seventy-five is.
I mean, I think we should leave it at that for, for an hour, I mean, it's.
Rather be conservative.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's easier to say, hey, we got a little bit more money than pay, don't.
Five hundred and sixty.
That's, yeah.
The, the, the bigger question now is, if, if tariffs are enacted on steel prices, what's that going to do to chassis?
Exactly.
Those heavy trucks use long wait.
Yeah, that's, hopefully we can get. Price locked down before. Stuff is crazy.
How close are you to being finalized on the? Unit that you'd like to bring to the council, or you got two bids that you?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to actually demo, there's something, I'm trying to get that lined up with this newer Elgin right now, and it's not, by the weather, weather's kind of real conducive, but we're looking at probably in March. And I mean, I mean, you guys come down, you know, if I can line that up, or you, you wanna come down and, and see.
So, you could actually try to get one in here to demo it for.
Yeah, we probably have it, we'd at least have it for a day, yeah, yeah, and, uh, and I could probably, I actually both units I'd like to do it. And, 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 or, you know, a couple of days apart or something like that, I don't know, I'm trying to do, and he actually called me when I'm on vacation, I gotta call him back, uh, tomorrow, the one guy, I'll try to line up when, obviously we want to get a little bit. Put it in March, yeah, but.
Running for water freezing and sweating.
Uh, but then shortly after that, I'd like to, if, I'd like to make that decision and then that way we can at least get it on books and get it, you know, get one spoken for that, at those numbers, right? And once, once we get squared down to.
But the delivery date would be a year from now.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
No, no, I, I would still say we want the delivery date in March or April.
Yeah.
Of next year, just because we wanna have that timeline to run. The season, yeah. Well, it's under warranty.
I mean, even if we took delivery of it. Yeah, next, have a setup basically so we would take delivery of it for in the spring of that.
Twenty-six.
That's just crazy for that price, only one year.
Oh, yeah.
March of the next year, you're already out.
You're out.
You're out.
And they do have, you know, they got, they got some things that you can put in, but they're, they obviously know their, no maintenance deals are highest, highest, high can be, cause they, and it's just like leasing one, we, we can, we can do that. But those leases are, are, are sky high too.
Cause they know their, their expenditure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One way or the other, they're getting.
So, you'll let us know then when you.
Yeah, the demos and.
To demo on, so the council.
I should know more after that, uh, this week I should be able to have that pretty well squared away, we'll, we'll be able to. So.
I agree.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
If you think of anything else, just holler too, there's no problem.
I can think of you bringing heat next time, it needs to be done.
Sounds good, off your eye.
Okay, uh, do you wanna talk, talk to Ben next?
The canine program is the next item we have for council to talk about. Ben, you wanna talk about the, uh, the desire, uh, could you get a canine program, the expenditure and, or grants available to offset cleaning costs?
Yeah, so, um, thought today pretty pleasantly since it started here, um, base is about a year, year and a half, maybe two for future people, people retired. Uh, I've talked to some of you about some of the other concerns I had about removing the canine program, um, but the big thing is the vehicle, right? That's, that's the biggest expenditure, now I've done my research in the past, when we're talking about the dog and the equipment and the food, that historically here's always been self-funded, the city has never really paid money for that, it's always been donations and grants and other things for the actual dog itself, but the vehicle's another story. Um, with the vehicle we're currently operating now, I mean, really, this is the oldest vehicle in the fleet, right? It really is. It's gonna be, if, if we don't get it fixed, I'm looking at a third engine already, um, we don't know if the air conditioning's gonna work in summer, which is a concern for having the dog in the back, um, you know, and it's just, it's, it's been road art, but we, right? Um, one thing that I, I did find was, was kind of interesting is, um, for a lot of canines, and we did this pretty extensively in Fayette two, is the, um. Criminal acquisition portion of that and, and things for criminal cases haven't really been done too much here for some reason, vehicles haven't been seized and resold by the city, um, money hasn't been requested through criminal cases as much as I'd like to see. Um, and that was another point of discussion, um, outside of the grants, right? Cause grants are great in theory, but it always depends on whether or not the money drives up or you get approved, right? Uh, we've already applied for three, still haven't heard yet, um. But, one thing I told Dave, what I'd like to see is if, if we do continue the program, right? I'd like to see a more aggressive requisition for criminal aspects, right? I think it's an easier pill to swallow to the citizens, who may see this money coming out, we can say that it was helped paid for or lasted by doing requisition. Right, I mean, one case we did, Fayette had us eight grand for a motorcycle. You know, so, you, it could be one case, but I mean, you can basically pay for a dog for three years with eight grand, right, and done itself, so. That's something I really want Dave to look at when we start looking at bigger cases, right? If the dog can establish those bigger cases, it's just about being a little bit smarter in the casework and following the big work of the county attorney to get that stuff done, right? Um, is that gonna help me right now? Probably not, no, but it is something that we can evaluate in the future, right? It is, I don't know why, but it's something that I can do on my end, once we get the criminal conviction of a drug case, we can look at any property and start seizing that stuff and resell it. Um, and that can knock down a lot of maintenance costs for not just the dog program, but for a lot of departments.
Right.
Right, that money can be used interbarmentally for anything I really want to use it for, um, and I think that there's the opportunities for that a lot here, um. Trying to think what else, uh, the quote, if it's in there, um, that's a true number, right? So, that's, the only thing it, it can go down, I just, I, I'm not expecting if, if we remove the vehicle, I'm really not expecting a great rate of value from the firm, right? I'm looking at probably.
Push pull or drag.
I hear it's gonna be like an excitement, um, to be honest, yeah.
But, it's in your police budget, so second page in on the big sheets.
On the big grouping sheets.
Big grouping sheets, second page in, third line item from the bottom, vehicle purchase, I have eighty-five thousand nine twenty-four in there, Ben.
And I was able to remove some things that we didn't need, that brought it down from the, I think it was eighty, I think it was additional, um, but, uh, trust me here. That vehicle is available now, right? So, we, we're not, we're technically on a waitlist, but that's a vehicle that can be outfitted and ready for us to run one, should we choose to do it. Uh, they have the inventory, um, I've always used two different companies, Carls, which is where this one went, and then there are other outfits, Fayette, um, and then there's another company out there, our Urbandale, uh, called Sector Defense, um. It's a personal preference thing, vehicles for me are kind of necessary for us, it's our mobile office, um, and I like the fact that everything's done and housed, both the companies, what they do is, when they outfit a vehicle for us, they actually give us a binder. So, that binder has every, like, electronic system they would put in there, all the equipment that we need, so that a lot of times if we have a problem, we can actually go to the binder and try to fix ourselves. The other part of it is too, with Carls and, and, uh, Sector Defense is if we do have an issue from the bill, they will come to us and fix it. So, I'm not a fan of taking it six different spots to get, you know, one does electronic.
It's like a camper, you get all your, you get everything in a packet and then they give you all your warranty and all your.
All the warranty and the equipment and.
Equipment and stuff.
Yeah, so, Carls does, uh, they do the vehicles and the outfits in the building, Urbandale just does outfits.
Those are the finished price?
Yeah, that's the finish, that's, everything from the day we pick it up, that's completely finished, ready to go hit the road that day.
Is that the only car that, um. I can't say it's probably that he drives inside his vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the other thing is too, I mean, he's had that vehicle for quite some time and he's been able to live that a lot, a lot longer quite some time, you know, with, with minimal repairs and, and things like that, that, you know. So, I know he takes care of it because it's still running, you know, so there's really not a concern that he's gonna run it to ground or abuse it.
If it wasn't a canine unit though, would it be considered part of our fleet?
Yes, yes, and so, just again, if we don't continue the, um, the, the typical outfit for a canine, we are not available like a metro city to have like a full blown dog cage in the back. Right, cause there are many times where it probably has to work alone.
Right.
So, there is a transport section, it's split in half.
Okay.
Um, which again, if we had to, and we've even discussed it now, is if we have a vehicle goes down, that can be added to the fleet and used for patrol work.
Okay.
So, um, it's, it's not gonna be just a full blown, only a canine, it'll have a transport cage.
Yeah, that's one clarification I have, thank you.
Yeah.
And you said a year before?
No, this is July.
July one, for the, the dawn.
Or about a year, year and a half.
About a year and a half.
And again, that's an estimate, right? You know, it ju, it just depends on, you know, how much the dog runs and you never know, right? The dog could get injured, it could, something could happen, somebody could, you know, kill it or whatever, you know, there are a lot of variables in there, but if everything goes to plan, um, you know, we have about a year and a half, two years, I would say.
How often is a dog used, like weekly?
Yeah, I mean, right now, winter's kinda tough, uh, but in the summer, I know that Dave hits it hard, uh, Kim and her officer leave their apartment every year, yearly, from what I've looked in the back, they always leave the drug arrests. Um, they always, you know, there's two of them that really hammer that section of it, um, and they kinda go in spurts, right? So, they kinda take their breaks in the winter and then when summer comes down and we get a lot of transit traffic and a lot of movement, then they hit that pretty hard, which is again, why I'm looking at it objectively, I do think there's a big opportunity there to. Create some revenue off the backs of people doing horrible things, um, we just haven't really done that in the past and I think that we should.
What do we do with some of those other cars, I know you've had cars that you see.
We, we've had cars, we, we see as a, you know, and they just sit in the back garage for forever.
A long time, yeah.
Forever, you know, the cages, figure out dispose of and stuff like that.
Yeah, we're not talking, I, I would, I would, uh, create a bunch of fees that like a holding place for a five hundred dollar junk thing, right, but, um, you know.
Someone that's gonna bring some revenue.
Exactly, yeah, I mean, there are certain vehicles out there that, you know, we can tie to a drug related item and get a conviction out of it, we can absolutely take a lot of that, you know, and again, it's not just the vehicles. It can be actual cash money that was involved too, which all of that can be requisitioned by us.
Yeah, I'd love to see you get more aggressive on that, maybe that'll teach these bad people in the area to stop doing bad things.
And that's the plan, right? I mean, ideally that is the plan, we kind of, I always tell the guys, it's kind of like laying a dry, uh, lining sand, right? Word spreads that we're a tough town and, and we do what we're supposed to, we get convictions, you know, we, and we make it known that a lot of our good equipment is paid for on the backs of doing our job, then it usually is a easier pill to swallow in the long term.
Traffic stops are good too, once in a while, we got a lot of people who don't like to use their turning signals or.
Well, I mean.
Or speed up and down the street.
And I just, it's a little like, knowledge lesson, lesson, I guess, about dogs too, is, is the other thing, i, i, the reason why it's also beneficial, the laws have changed, obviously, um, like when I started, you know, you could hold up a traffic stop for a long time to get a dog here. Now you can't do that, right? I mean, canine has to be, we have to be, we have to, essentially an officer has to conduct his business and the canine has to show up while he's conducting that business in order to use the dog. Right, so Dave has.
You can't hold up to, you can't hold it up to.
That officer, you know, if I did trap stop, let's say I work with Dave, my job is only to do, I have a reasonable amount of time to complete that trap stop and I can't do anything else. I can't have a sidebar really with Dave and say, this is what I think, or this is what I, whatever, it's kind of a, a job on us that, you know, hey, tonight I'm going to do a drug interdiction, I need you close. Right, so that when I'm doing those stops and I'm doing my portion, Dave now, in accordance with law, we cannot delay that stop in any, in any way, shape or form. Right, so that's another thing is we're talking about stopping the canine program and using a deputy's dog.
He's gonna be close.
He's gotta be basically right on us, right? If he's on the other side of the county, I can't call him and say, well, I'll take my time writing up the citation in the hopes that he can get here by the time I'm done.
Yeah.
And then in the aspect, if we do use a county's dog and there are seizures, we get them, the county gets them.
County gets them. So, and there, there's just, it, it's, you know, again, the, the dog, I had the same finding Fayette, starting from the ground up, I mean, yes, they are expensive endeavors, right? I fully understand that, I know they are, trust me, but, you know, if they are utilized properly on the backend, they can be pretty self fulfilling properties.
What's the difference in price from a normal squad car to a canine unit?
Probably about, so, the, the last one we had was what, fifty-one, I think?
Um. Under vehicle purchase, forty-nine, ninety-three, and that's probably, did we trade on that one?
I don't.
Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah.
But was it a car or?
It was a car.
That one was the Explorer.
It was a hybrid SUV.
So, I mean, just in comparison, even numbers, I mean, are we looking, you can buy two squad cars for one canine car, or are we talking less than that?
What was the question, sorry?
So, like, as far as like the squad car compared to the canine squad car, are we talking two to one ratio on pricing or?
One point five.
One point five?
Yeah, okay.
Part of the challenge is, the car has to be able to run continuously.
Right.
While the dog's in there, to keep the heater cool.
Right.
And so that's part of the, the rare terror is idle hours.
And that was brought up, and I did talk to Dave about that, it's just in the future, you know, if he is not out patrolling, then maybe we let it sit in the back, keep the warm power, turn it off. Cause it also saves up fuel costs too, in the end, so.
I was gonna say, otherwise, is there a way we could maybe set up a kennel back there, where we could bring the dog in, kennel?
Uh, I mean, the dogs, since I've been here, I, I mean, Ace has been in the office numerous times.
Right, right. Where he could shut the vehicle off.
Could have it idle.
Correct, and he can bring it down here, he knows, he's very personalized.
Right. He's not a crazy, not a lot.
So, there's some opportunity there to, yes, to get the idle time down.
Correct.
You remember Ralph, Ralph was not personable.
Was not at all. Didn't like people.
Well, not the other part too, since we get to see Dave work, you know, it is nice having somebody that can create those dogs that are good in the public, right? And don't get me wrong, uh, you know, some of those new dogs, they serve a purpose, but we're not a financial agency, they're on you that every day.
Right.
Yeah, that's another discussion that too about, you know, we use them primarily for drug work, um, we don't really use them too much for, for tracking or anything like that, so we're even evaluating if we do continue the program. And just a single purpose dog in the future, just a drug dog, since that's the primary functions that basically they're using, right? Which does cut on start a pos four new dog too, cause it's not as many certifications, not as many state required training hours per month, you know, we only do one discipline, it, it also cuts back on those costs per year.
But the cost of the dog is pretty much self-funded, it's just the vehicle that we have and it can kick off the.
Correct, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, the last time I checked too, I think there's like twelve thousand-ish in the canine fund.
There is, that is fund one eighty, yeah, there's about eleven thousand eight thirty-two, I have a little money in my training or whatever, if we spend it. Um, but traditionally, I think I've had two dogs since, since I've been here and those, people love to donate to those programs, so there's usually no problem in fundraising to, when we're ready to do a replacement dog.
And I've had that conversation with Dave too, that if we can't get this vehicle purchased, so we are gonna continue the program, cause I think if we purchase the vehicle, right, I mean, it's an eighty-five thousand dollar vehicle, we kinda have to look at continuing the program. Is that we're gonna have to again, also be aggressive on the fundraiser portion of it, or I'd like to continue that, cause I, I have to straightforward, you know, if, if you guys agree to, to give this new vehicle, continue the program, the rest of that stuff has to be self-funded. Right, which absolutely we will all help it, but I, I'm not gonna come back and, you know, come, I'm not coming here and ask you guys for eighty-five thousand, then they're gonna come back. After another twenty dollars per dog or whatever it is maybe, that portion has, that money has to be in that account. Ready to be used, or we get to that point, we know Ace is being retired.
And our veterinarians have been generous too, and donating their services for the routine things for the, for the K nine. So we've been, portion that way, it's also a good PR tool for the department, I know, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts.
And the vehicle there is, all the equipment too can be reused.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right, yeah.
You know, I, again, starting one from the ground out, that number blew my mind when we were done, but you know, the leashes, the the armor, but I mean. All that little nickel and dime stuff that's already there can be reused, which is a benefit. Um so we're not looking at a huge maintenance cost to redo a bunch of that stuff, which is nice, the little tiny little pieces. That's what fits you really good, so.
Okay.
And well, there is a motion then, is what I'm hearing?
If you think you have it figured in there.
It's in there right now, we we haven't taken it out, we we have it in there, so everything we're talking about right now is in the budget. Excuse me. Stuff we've talked about previously here, we'll talk about a couple things that I don't think we have in there, so. Nice, I have to move on, that'll be that security access system.
Just real quick, so that uh the vehicle is under the general fund budget, so that's where. You know, when you look at this sheet, you can see everything and any from balances in the general fund. So I'm sure you understood that, and we'll get stuff and go to the sheets, sorry.
No, definitely. Um so, thing we want to talk about, and we got launched last week, is updating the cameras. And security systems to develop the the doors. Um that is something that uh we hadn't previously planned on. Uh but the cameras aren't feeling, we're no longer able to record information. Uh we we've gone through some transitions with the staff thing, then we feel it's beneficial first to be able to button things up a little bit better here.
It is currently in the budget right now?
It is not, we would need to amend for that, I didn't wanna put that one in yet, cause we just brought it up to you. But it has, um and it's not just for city helps, for the police department and then.
The parks.
And a couple of, couple of the high traffic parks, so um.
Do you remember what the prices were?
Oh, I haven't.
I think it was like fifty, one time house, like, I wanna say fifty five, fifty seven, that range. Um we would probably just amend the general fund budget to to pay for it out of there. If the council wants to go ahead and do that.
Is it there, like, is it possible to pull it off?
Yes.
You mean, pay for it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's funding, I mean, we do, we do have a surplus in the general fund. Um we don't want to deplete that down all the way by any means, because that's.
That's not a good idea.
No, and it's our startup for all the salaries until we get our big tax draw in September, October.
As far as the cameras and.
Have capacity.
That'll help you guys. Kind of like end of some of the vandalism that's going on and.
Yeah.
Be able to use that.
I think if we do this too, I think a good thing is to, again, put that out there, and let the general public know, again, cause it is taxpayer money, and I think they need to know what they're. Putting their money into, but again, I think going with that higher end, that has some of the capabilities that maybe other people don't have, right? This isn't just a camera anymore. Right? Um and I think that if we use it to our benefit, a few times and promote that out there. Again, that, you know, I look at it too as a taxpayer anywhere, and when I see it's actually effective, I'm okay with it, right?
Doesn't mean somebody won't still try to do it.
Hundred percent right.
But if we can catch the vandal.
Right.
Make them pay for it.
Exactly.
Right.
Right, and and you know, again, doesn't occur all the time, no, but again, the plan is to kind of draw lines. And say, we have these sort of abilities now.
Right.
And we are protecting what we spend a lot of money on and things that other people enjoy. And if you choose to make horrible decisions, then we have the capability to find out who you are.
Who said fifty five? It's sixty three thousand one hundred seventy eight dollars.
Is that much of us?
Yeah.
That shows right now.
Yeah, that's what it says right here.
That's right, cause the original was, and then I think they didn't have a.
So basically, they didn't have the tax, then they didn't remove our tax on the first one, was that it?
Uh sixty three thousand one hundred seventy eight dollars and fifty nine cents.
And that covers city hall.
City hall, uh.
Complete the, on the police side, and then.
And then those doors.
The doors.
Doors, or security access.
And then the pool and tarrel, whitewater park, and then there's uh.
I'm sure, and the shrim park, which there's, and the shrim park and the pool, the cameras that failed, and the whitewater park. I think they're operational right now, but.
I'd like to get them all on the one system.
Get it on one system and then it's accessible, more accessible to PD, they can access them from the phone.
Yeah.
Save data back, you know, so you can save film, right?
And that, the the underlying cost again is is, you know, your your service fees, right? So the the cameras, like at the parks. The ones that aren't inherently in this building, right? They they're cellular phone, or cellular cameras, but we're not paying monthly fee.
Right.
Right? The other ones that we got was, I think the one even said two hundred bucks a month.
Oh wow, yeah.
Right? So if you, again, had a ten year or five year contract, you know, that's ten thousand dollars, that we're paying just on cellular fees.
And this is a one time cost. For five years.
Five years.
So we're not gonna have like ni- an annual maintenance, annual service costs, it's all in that one.
In that bundle, and then if I remember right, you said we can add?
Correct, so within that system too, in that five years, right? So I know that you've talked about getting cameras, a- and again. If we're still within that five years, he could add a cameras to his his area and get on the system. But we would only pay for the cameras that they saw, correct? They can piggyback on, we don't have to sign a new contract within those five years to add new stuff to protect.
I was wondering why we left off bump park or.
The shop.
The shop.
Actually, what I was wondering is how it goes.
The what's gone?
Compost pile.
The compost, big time.
I think if Perry ever would switch over into it, then we could, we could have that.
But we were trying to keep the cost down.
Yeah, and. See how it works before you make another investment.
We can, we, I'm for them, a hundred percent, I think that to be able to protect our taxpayers' investments in the parks. That we've stuck the money into, I think is is just a smart move, and then we can be able to test run with the ones that we have now, and then look at. The compost and the city shop and stuff like that, that we're having other issues in, I mean.
I think with the, with the pound and stuff down there is a big, you know, there's a lot of people that come and go down there just to the.
Well, and we've had an instance this past year where we had somebody down there that was.
Trying to break in.
Trying to break into the pound now, if if it's on camera, there's no arguments whatsoever that, no, it wasn't me.
This citizen not gonna try to break into the city shop or something. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I am, I'm missing laptop now.
Oh, are you? Yeah.
It's a, it's a strange deal, like we, like I have no idea what's.
It was during regular hours?
Ken was working in the shop, it's, so.
That is weird.
Yeah.
Well, during during regular hours, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys don't lock up the shop or business.
No, it's, cause it's always been kind of like a, a public.
Right.
A public plate, you know, where.
Cause you, I mean, if a citizen walked in randomly and was like, hey, can I, can I tour the shop, you'd be bound to do so, so I mean, I have no reason to lock it up.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we definitely don't like them walking through the work area.
Yeah.
Well, right, I mean, for safety reasons, obviously.
And I've always avoided like completely, in the summertime, I like keeping the majority of the doors closed, but in the summertime, we try to. Open it up to let, you know, cool air.
Yeah, anybody that's ever worked in a hot garage knows that the doors helps, I mean.
But, so it should, it's a, it's a strange deal, like I don't, but and I'm, I think we could get by with a couple cameras down there, actually, like one kind of. You know, pointing down, we'd have to have one kind of run down the side of the property.
Well, we don't have to tell them we're not gonna be pointing, we just want some cameras though.
Yeah, exactly, but I I don't think we'd have to get.
I mean, you should, like, cover like.
Well, we had, we had the guy come in to do the assessment of the building, and then I don't know the conversation with Doug for the parks.
Right.
Uh but the quote was, what best case scenario is, you know, some of them, if you look at the quotes, some of them are fisheye cameras, which are wider.
Right.
Point of view, we had a hill that more in the park, like I think it's a hundred ninety degrees. But the ones in in the office are not, those are your ninety to a hundred and ten degree cameras, you know, they're not as expensive, cause obviously the wider your angle, the more. So they had to go all out on every single section if they don't need it. Um and then two, uh we didn't really talk about, but we're actually, with this quote, they're adding another camera in the back too. So, um you know, we have that back uh door, that door covered as well.
And it catches some of the alley, driven to chat, right? Chad Ray was really wanting to get something back there. Um you know, and it's just, it's a little bit different around here now without dispatch, because before we never hear, coming for sub and. So, you know, even at some point down the road, we'll have to talk about uh fire, um fire alarms and and all of that too. Um so our system is getting a little bit dated there, but right now, just having the cameras available, um. You know, like Ben and Chuck have, I mean, there are sometimes where we'll get some customers that are not happy. And, you know, safety wise, it'd just feel a little better if the camera was on and.
The sixty three then covers, like you said, the the parks and.
Not yet.
I had, I was gone, I didn't meet with her at all.
But the only reason we begin with this company was that was the benefit, if we sign a five year, they, they, you know, he can find time to budget if that's something he wants to do. So it's not, you know, for anybody, any any city area that we want covered, within that five, we're only paying for the install of the cameras.
Right.
We're not resetting a new contract, I mean, they can keep that on our current contract, our current system. Um and we can still give you out the permissions too.
Did you give you a, a cost per camera?
Yeah, so you'd be able to look at the quote, see kind of what you're looking at too, for us.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's vital to protect city hall.
I do, I, 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 I mean, uh we gotta be able to protect the people in here.
Yeah.
Um and then, like you said, the parks to build a, protect our money, um.
Yeah, we spent way too much money on, on train park, for instance, and the whitewater park to not protect them, in my opinion.
So we will put this on the agenda for Monday for you guys to. Form a group or adopt.
And I will add that in then to the, it'll go in the reestimated budget, cause I'm thinking expenditure will happen before June thirty.
Yeah, they they, again, so they have a outfitter out of themselves, that can come in as soon as they get the green light, they can schedule it out. So they don't really have too much work right now, so it can be done fairly quick.
I would be happy to do it.
A one, a one, are you?
I mean, well, it's a little one.
This is the only one.
Yeah, this is just a motion, it's not your resolution, it's just a motion.
It's a motion, don't approve of an expenditure or solvency. Right?
Several adoption.
Yeah, we'll put it.
So just a one time on the agenda, it's not a three.
Yeah.
No, ordinances are a little big, requires three.
I always get them mixed up.
No, it's easy to do.
Yeah, there's so many different things.
That's why I bet you guys.
Put in the reestimated, and then we'll have it on Monday's agenda.
And did we have anything else for these two gentlemen, or can we let them go?
Oh, let me double check here.
Well, until we get security cameras, she took it out.
Yeah.
So we get these security cameras, you keep you here with us.
Okay.
Yeah, so I had asked about maybe that one, it's up there, so more kind of centered right there, so it would catch the. Traffic coming in that door.
Challenge we ran into though, is the sun.
This guy said that these cameras shouldn't, that shouldn't affect it all.
No wire, no.
He said that he can call your camera in places where it shouldn't affect it too much.
All right, these two guys would be releasing on everything else.
Unless you guys have something else you wanna ask him.
No. Yeah, okay, thank you guys.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah.
The next item, uh the document we could go was a stormwater study. This is what the program was proposing in the study of downtown stormwater areas, determining what they need for painting. For all that, uh they were in there, like whether it's better to come down Madison. Delaware, Franklin, now by the bridge, outlet that pipe for stormwater drainage. It's the same distance or a little bit shorter than you're going, straight west down Butler Street. Challenge Butler Street, we don't have that, you know, plan, or replacement or making that up, so that would tear up that street. Must certainly be a different cost that, so this is something we can plan in and phase in as we start looking at. The West Mary Street Bridge Rehabilitation, looking at doing our downtown. And figuring out what we need to do, we've got some sensors that we're cleaning up, we need to do, uh water mains in some areas will need to be touched up. Uh stormwater is the big key, and then obviously doing our street, I don't wanna call it streetscape, that's uh an ugly word for some people. But when you look at it, I do wanna look at the bump outs at the intersections. So the pedestrians don't have to cross fifty foot of street from one end to the, just the travel portion, the parking lanes are.
That's why you need adjacent to leave, so you didn't have to care about the bump.
Exactly.
Well, that'll keep uh cars from trying to make the turns too.
It will, it'll keep cars from turning right. Especially on Franklin Street, where I've seen a number of people try to pass into right hand side, because they're taking a right and they're going down the driveway.
Uh huh.
Uh but that's not the only location, the other location around.
Um how would that affect the eighteen miller's coming, south of thirteen?
It won't.
Yeah.
Not, not, not a bit. Um because we won't be able to bump it out on thirteen.
On thirteen, no.
No. Now, those will be painted lines, and that's it.
That stops everybody.
Yeah.
That affects real estate, don't anything.
It it does affect it, it's because they have to maneuver around it. That's the reason we're a little bit more agitated with it, because they have to slow down, move them later around and do it that way.
You're actually bumping out.
Um so this.
You're actually coming out, yeah.
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 So your parking lanes are still here.
Right.
They just pull in there.
Almost like they do in like, um.
And then they just have a small crossbar, so they can stay out here. And that's determination. But the other thing, it provides us, you know, flexibility upon elevation for ADA sidewalks.
And several, we're on, we're smart enough to be good with that.
We are, so this is just the storm.
Right.
Water, but the bump outs do help with stormwater or ADA compliance.
Right.
But with the storm sewer, we also need to know where we're gonna put the intakes. And some of the intakes we have, like this one over here, is right in the intersection, in the corner, instead of getting around, catching it before it gets in the intersection.
You gotta watch out for the bicycle, when you're riding a bicycle sometime, and we're the, and takes are in.
Mm-hmm.
Um as far as doing the the study, how far out, I mean, if we do a study now for street projects, are we opening ourselves up for. Kind of knowing how this is gonna work out for the next five years of street projects?
It would give us only the downtown area, this, it's isolated.
Right, I mean, that that study will be good.
For ten years, ten, fifteen years, and and so that will reduce the engineering when we do those street projects, cause they already have the storm sewer taking care of. So it's not like this is a one time expenditure, and we'll see more expenditures each time, we we do a segment or phase of of the project. We're just eating this upfront, so we have a bed on, you know, what we need to do, cause it does make a difference between a thirty inch pipe and a forty eight inch pipe. Because the capacity where that lays, it typically sensors who are, can be in about the same depth as this. Uh storm sewer, and they're both at gravity, so someone has to make an adjustment someplace.
When's the last time we did those, redid those streets, in that area? I mean, it has been a.
Two thousand.
Long time.
Uh when the bank did their addition, what we did was upgraded the water main.
Yeah.
Uh otherwise, we did an old asshole overlay, um two thousand twenty.
Uh just a portion of Franklin.
Franklin, yeah.
But we have never.
And then so. Franklin.
Even just uh Main Street right here in front of us, when's the last time? So we don't truly know, like, is there anybody on our staff that knows the depths of everything?
No, they they'll, they'll verify everything that's part of the study, so sensors here we know.
Right.
Because with pop panels, we know the pipe is, the distance. Yeah, water main, we we have a good idea where they're at. Um but now we also have a bunch of fiber in the ground.
Right, and all this will, that let us know exactly where everything is, and how to miss.
Not, not everything, this is for the storm sewer.
Dark side still.
And what we need to have, you know, help us prepare then, when we do the study for each phase.
Okay, so we pay for it now, or we pay for it later, when we do, when we do actually have the streets, you know?
And and the thing, the reason I'm looking at this now, is we can tie this in with West Mary Street Bridge. Not projects together, because West Mary Street Bridge is gonna be federal funds, and have separate, or all of this separate projects. But the timing to be about the same, so we're only impacting those business owners. Now, everybody else is gonna get irrigated and tired, but I, they're gonna get project weary, we stretch this out for years, four phases. But I think funding wise and time wise, it's gonna have to be that way.
What are we looking at for, uh?
Forty-six thousand.
Is this in the budget now?
No.
It's not in the current budget, no, and it's not in the projected budget.
No.
It is, I mean, as far as the impact and what this is gonna do, adding this on, are we going to be okay?
We would put this into, I would pay for this out of, um, the council wants to, out of Fund Three Twenty Four Street Projects. That's choice bottom of the sheet, um, and that, we would not do it till July, right?
Correct.
Starting in July, so next fiscal year's budget.
And we don't have anything other than the Millen overlay projected for this fiscal year, as we do in.
Well, that's a must. Uh, cause I wanna talk about, as we do this budget, fifty thousand dollars for small projects.
Yeah, well, we have that in. But I would put it underneath, um, Fund Three Twenty Four, yeah, the only other thing we have out of there is, um. Street extensions, small projects, I did not put anything in for West Marion Street Bridge because I wasn't sure on the timing on that.
We're still here.
So it'll be the next budget, that we'll see.
What are you talking about?
The budget.
You said you didn't want it out there because we were saving that, so Three Twenty Four, I think makes sense because it's gonna be for street projects.
It is, we can use Three Twenty Four, Three Ten. Um, Paragon has received notification from idols, they can move forward on their stormwater project, like we did, weren't they, they were home and. And so we may need some seed money.
So that's what that Fund Three Ten is carrying a balance of a hundred and fifty-two, hundred and fifty-four with interest. So that's where, like, those projects, that's where we did, um, the one out on the east end of town, that stormwater project. Um, that's where that was paid from, so the Fund Three Twenty Four, we would throw the forty-six thousand in there. The money that comes into that is from local option, from special assessments from prior projects. And from the Street Improvement Fund, so if we needed to adjust. Um, you know, transfer a little more load loss to it, we could, right now it looks like we'd be fine, throwing forty-six in, we, we'd finish with about. Thirteen hundred in there.
Uh, the Three Ten.
Leave Three Ten alone because of potential for future projects there, um. So that's where, where I would probably propose to put it. Um, you know, like we talked about previously on budgets, I tried to be very conservative on expenditures and revenues, meaning I'm estimating high. On expenditures, lower on revenue, so, so these are probably worst case scenarios. Um, you know, the hard thing, like the Street Projects Fund, which is why I like to keep separate, is construction years across, and so. You know, it's, that's the one where it's a little bit hard to forecast how much train we're gonna have, but this year it's not really the. The only thing we have is that Millen overlay coming up, and then, um, some engineering work and small projects. So that's where I would propose to put it if the council wants to.
I really think it's important to do it, to look forward to what we wanna do, when we do our comprehensive plan, this is all gonna come together. But I think that this is laying the groundwork for that comprehensive plan we need to do, so.
Gives us a bigger picture of what's going on.
Yep, it's better to know what's down there.
More accurate.
Well, uh, by doing this, incorporating into the comprehensive plan, incorporating the downtown phase redevelopment, also allows us to have. More meetings, public input, so we sit down, talk with property, or stop with the business owners, what, what would they like to see, you know? What we keep hearing about outside dining, there are options out there, so we have these islands. You can put, um, other storage containers out there that's open air container, uh, so they can put dining in the parking stall. I've seen that in downtown, uh, Muscatine, those are the things that you can talk about and look at and vision for.
When they're doing their comprehensive planning, not part of this study.
It's not part of the study. Aaron, I'm looking five years down, you keep looking for tomorrow.
I'm budgeting for tomorrow.
You're budgeting for next year.
But to me, we're gonna pay for it at some point in time, right? Uh, but it makes sense, if we're gonna have to bury a pipe under the bridge, or next to the bridge, under that walkway. Let's make sure we size it appropriately, whether it's one larger pipe or two smaller parallel pipes, what we need to do, we need to find out what, what's gonna work.
I hope our bids probably better too, so we'll have a better idea.
It's experience, a lot happier if we did it right the first time.
Well, it's gonna be there for a hundred years, so I just set up.
Right, sure.
I set up. Okay, so we'll continue to talk about the stormwater study, um, we don't have to do anything with it Monday night, we got time on that, I think, now, so we'll. Watch that one off for meeting and.
I will plug it into, if this is this council's direction, I will plug it into the budget for next fiscal year, the expenditure. Council will select, approve it, but at least that it's in there, it's budgeted, is that?
You did that with you.
Is that all right? Okay.
You'll see what's going on and how it impacts everything.
Was there anything else you needed to talk about tonight, Dan?
Not on that, no, it's just the detailed budget information.
What would you like to go to next? You know, let you guys leave.
Well, let's talk about water.
Okay.
So that's the little handout, this is type activities.
We wanna take a minute break while he sees.
You wanna grab a water or something?
Yeah. Do we need to?
I don't know, but we have cups and stuff.
We have a faucet.
We have really good city water.
I'll just Spencer out of the freezer for. So Aaron and I are finishing this up. The challenge we have is this budget has to be to the county auditor by March fifth. Now, we can reduce it from there, we cannot increase it, so whatever we put, it's the maximum by March fifth. And then, that's when, uh, we'll have two meetings on.
So what, what will happen is we will meet on March third. Just to finalize, make sure everything looks okay, but we're, I think we're, we're close now. Um, and that will also be a special meeting where you will set the public hearing, um, on the proposed tax levy. For April, uh, April seventh. And we will have two meetings on the evening of April seventh, through all the five o'clock meeting where we have just that public hearing on the proposed levy. Where people can come in, we'll keep that open either, I don't know, we had Rainbow Huggins last year, fifteen minutes or so. Then we will close that meeting, and then we will have another meeting, like fifteen minutes later. Where we will set the public hearing for the actual budget for April twenty-eighth. So those, um, we're gonna have a couple, couple of special meetings there, April third, or I mean, March third, and then. Um, April seventh will be the two special meetings. Three actually, is it March third? Mark, yeah, March third, we're gonna need just to. Re-verify on the budget, make sure the council is good with it, so that I can get it to the county by March fifth. And at that, uh, March third meeting, we will, um, it'll be a special meeting, so you guys can put the public hearing on the proposed levy. For April seventh. Then April seventh, there'll be two meetings that night, the one on, the one with the public hearing, on the proposed levy, and then one to set the public hearing for the. Actual budget.
Adoption.
Adoption of the actual budget, and that, that public hearing will be at our regular meeting in April, second meeting in April.
And March third is just the same.
Yeah.
March to the county, that's where we draw the line. That's, that's the top.
Yeah, so, and they, they watch that. But just, there's, um, you have to publish not less than ten or more than twenty days, so just to be able to meet those requirements. The letter is to the auditor on March fifth, but they don't send until March twentieth. And then we had a lot of time for that letter to get sent, they wanted us to allow at least a week, there's nothing in legislation that says that, but it's. Strongly recommended, so that's where we're doing the April seventh meeting on that proposed one. So.
Just so we can meet all the requirements of House files.
It's just. The public hearing dates and all of that, it, it just makes it really hard when we have a once a week publication, but you honestly forget our newspaper too, so.
So we'll move on to business type activities, we talked earlier in our budget about increasing water rates and sewer rates, both at seven percent. And so what this does is it shows you how that impacts our utility bills. So I gave you their total budget, we got that, and I break it down per cap there. Um, so this is kind of my presentation that I do that summary of budgets is still going through all the thousand line items. So you can kind of see the highlights there, but with the increase in water age, if you go back to that first table. The boat increase of seven percent for water service. Base rate increases would increase from seven twenty-six to seven dollars and seventy-seven cents per month for base residential water rate. The per thousand gallon rate, uh, would increase from three dollars eighty-five cents per thousand to four dollars twelve cents per thousand. So this is the, the. So this is the page, and so the table will tell you what the proposed increase, how that impacts things. I base it on three thousand gallon usage per month, six thousand gallons usage per month, and ten thousand, those tend to be. Kind of how the residential uses get broke out quite a bit. Um, household of four, that runs a daycare inside that will typically use about six thousand gallons a month. Larger households will use ten thousand gallons, uh, uh, single or couple, small couple, typically three thousand gallons. So when we looked at the no usage, we talked about that, there's a base charge, that, that is having that service available to you. And then you get charged with consumption, so with no usage, on a seven percent increase, you're looking at fifty-one cents per month acreage. Um, on three thousand gallons, it increased that bill one dollars and thirty, one dollar and thirty-two cents. This is again, just the water side, and I've got the sewer, I've got the other one as well. But then I have to combine, I got last page there. Sewer is already higher than what water is because we did that sewer plant expansion renovation in two thousand and ten. Um, and we had to increase water and sewer rates in two thousand and ten in order to pay for that. Back in two thousand and ten, actually it's just eight, when we started looking at this, uh, we doubled the rates because they had not been increased in fifteen years. Um, that was a shock for a lot of people. Olin has recently did a twenty percent increase in that, they might have to do that again next year too, to cover the costs of water costs. For the material, maintenance, and management of their infrastructure, water towers are expensive, pumps, wells, uh, any sort of.
Lift stations.
Lift stations and stuff like that.
Um. Did you wanna talk about the legislations currently out there?
Senate Study Bill eleven sixteen is being proposed that would prohibit, that would limit cities to increasing. Water and, or utility rates by more than two percent or the CPI, whichever is less.
So.
Cool. Well, I don't know how we would finance and fund a new wastewater plant.
Oh my god.
And they, they, these requirements are coming from DNR and EPA.
Yeah, they're not, nobody wants to replace their wastewater plant, that is a DNR directive.
You know, and, and we would, when our next permit comes up, I'm sure we're gonna have to make newer restrictions on nitrates and phosphorus.
We wrote this bill.
Uh, it's Senator, I, I don't have it on.
So we can write him directly.
What was the bill again?
It's Senate Study Bill eleven sixteen.
Eleven sixteen, I'm sure those.
It's either eleven, it's eleven sixteen or eleven twelve. One thing is.
So what happens if, you know, because there's some communities.
It's eleven twelve. Or fourteen.
There's some communities that like. They have a conglomerate who comes in and builds a.
That's a government.
A plant for them, and then the city pays them.
Yeah, they contract it out, or hire it out, yeah.
And what if their fees go up more than two, because you have to recoup it somehow, or do they just let that company build?
I, again, this is a study bill, I've not seen how it, they're looking to propose it. Um, it's gonna get through the subcommittee first before it gets, um, out to be voted on by the full. Um, the positive thing is we do have a funnel, initial funnel, funnel coming out. I'm just not sure whether this is eligible for ways and means, which would mean it's not approved.
What's that mean if it's not approved?
It means they, they can talk about it later on, it doesn't get narrowed down as part of their.
For now.
Yeah, so there's two funnels, uh, first funnel has to get through the subcommittees and committees of each of the House and Senate. First, the second funnel has to go through the subcommittees and committees of the other house branch before it is voted on, so.
This is just in subcommittee right now.
Yeah, I believe, um.
You know, it's, it's good news that the tax paid. It's not good news if anybody trying to crunch numbers and make the city make a deal with it.
Hey, we're gonna limit the income revenue, let's limit the expenditures.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's the easiest way, of course, to handle, so if our expenditures are increased by more than two percent or CPI, I'm fine with it. What, what we can.
And don't limit our growth. Don't limit our growth, so we can spread it out over more people, that's the other thing they did to us.
Right.
So.
I wanna raise these things in line.
Sewer rate cap, uh, Senate Study Bill seven one one one.
So, what, what's, what's gonna, I mean. You have to jump the gun to beat the two percent, so what would, I mean, what would be a realistic answer here? Jump our water rates up three hundred percent, so that way when all this starts hitting, we're actually okay?
Well, that, again, we can't, there, there's not. Or just, we, we need to figure out a way to work with them, now, I don't like to panic because it's not.
Well, yeah, and that.
So viable, but same thing, we've gotta be able to respond.
Start writing, start writing.
That doesn't make sense, because we can't restrict it. They want us to run like a business, and our expenditures are exceeding, our revenues are coming in. Or we're getting to the point where we cannot help offset what we're gonna need for future expansion expenditures.
At some point then, the wastewater plant's gonna have to be rebuilt, I mean, that's inevitable, so you're gonna cap the way. Right, but, I mean, if you're gonna cap the way that we can recoup.
It might fall over. But, and that's the whole.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, it's just. Right now, I think there's a lot of bills being thrown out there that are anti-sitting, to get us scrambling to focus on a bunch of different bills. And, and now, because they're still going after the profit tax bill again, I'm not sure what they're planning on that, I'm not sure how this can impact this.
Well, I think last year you said we raised seven.
We raised seven.
We had talked about, we're already behind the gun.
We're, we're, we're beyond it, yeah.
So if we do another seven, we're still behind the gun.
But we're catching.
But we're catching up.
Yeah, we're, we're not doing a big twenty percent increase to get us to where we need to be.
I was gonna say, last year you said something, well, you need to be at right about twenty to be where we should be.
Yep.
Okay, so, so every year, so if we did another seven this year.
Yeah, so when you look at what the, uh, combined impact is on that last table, uh, for personally, it is three thousand gallons a month. With a seven percent increase on water and sewer, you'll see an increase of three dollars and forty-two cents. Six thousand gallons a month, it's five dollars and fifty-five cents, ten thousand, it's eight dollars and forty cents. Our higher users will have a much higher impact. The lower users, they won't see as big of an impact, but it's still an impact.
All right, so let me ask you, on the, between the six and the ten gallon, ten thousand gallons, wha- what's the percentage there? Like, are you talking heavy users, like?
Of people that are using a hundred thousand gallons a month. Our businesses and industries.
Okay.
The hospital, um.
Right.
Out there in, um, with Strighton, um. One of our hotels was one of our top ten users. Um, I think that's gonna change right now, but we'll talk about that later. Uh, but we do have a couple of industries that use quite a little.
Quite a bit.
Good.
But that's also, because we have industries that use quite a lot, that helps us offset, uh, lower rates for the residential. Um, so this is, by doing this, again, we're trying to bump things up because the cost for electric motors, pumps, wiring. Um, lift stations, everything's gone up so much, and we, we need to get a solid footing here.
They have that number backwards, it's one 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 seven, Senate Study Bills, one 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 seven.
Three ones and something.
Yeah, I am you, I went to their email, but they haven't, so it's one 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 seven, not seven one one.
Thank you.
And that's, this has just been stated by, correct?
It's correct.
So.
I would talk to Senator Dan Zama, he represents us. This is a Senate Study Bill, so this is in the Senate, so that's his jurisdiction. This is a Senate study bill, so this is in the Senate, so that's his jurisdiction. You know, he he may understand some restrictions, maybe this is something, again. Senator Webster was one out of the quad city area that's proposed quite a few bills that are anti-city.
Yeah, the hard part is they look at DuMonte, Zira, and Iowa City, they're not looking at overall Iowa. Mancha-, you know, Manchester and all the little towns surrounding us. Limiting them to two percent, I mean, they're gonna become the county's issue.
I was on the legislative committee meeting and sold down thirty five hundred, thirty million dollar wastewater plant.
So how does it, so the the cities that are in, like Delaware County, that they have. Where the county picks up tabs for them, are they unincorporated on, is that what it?
They're unincorporated, it's like.
Once you want to incorporate.
Petersburg is. And unfortunately, with House five seventy eight restricting growth, why these small towns? Unincorporated in the counties, we have to take motor because they're gonna be a worry to the county. Now the county's gonna have to take over uh water and sewer in these locations, uh some of. I drive to the E C I haters, I can't think of the name system because they really get that die uh to run those.
That's what I was talking about, those.
But seven percent is what I'm proposing, uh what Aaron and I need to know today is, is that. With the budgeting this way, or do we need to change it?
Well, I think you always gotta keep it there, I mean, just because of our growth and. As Chad said, you know, our cost on just getting meters and our cost on fittings and couplings and. Being just on water hole, sewer on period, I mean, everything we do now, it'll be, touch it, break it, it's eight, ten grand, it seems like, so.
And didn't we, over several years, there, Bill, Mary Ann, remind me if I'm wrong, but we had talked about doing more than five percent, we kept it more at three and two. One and two, yeah.
Yeah, and it just, when Chad talked to us, I don't know if you remember, he talked about um. Oh, the big project.
Pumps system, you know, replacing the uh pressure station, pump station uh down by the river. And maybe doing it so we're all on the same high-pressure system as opposed to uh half the town on the high-pressure, half the town on the low.
And that's gonna be an expensive project, so on, again, the, this is my favorite sheet to use. Um, but because it's kind of like where we're gonna be at, so water is fun six hundred. And you can see by doing these increases, we are able to start to build up a little bit, so they finished out. Um, they started July one with a five hundred and twenty nine thousand dollar balance. This year, they've got, I'm projecting finance and expenditures, but we've had those meter issues come up. So they'll finish out the year at five hundred and eighteen, next year, they'll finish out at six hundred and nine thousand, so. What that does is it helps us not to have to borrow as much when we go to do those bigger projects that, you know, like the water project that Chad's talking about. Um, sewer is is starting to get a balance, but not as quickly, just because those expenditures. They tend to be expensive, and we've had lift station work that we've been doing the last couple of years, so. You know, the the increases are just keeping pace with the expenditures, again, on both these utilities, I budget expenditures. High in revenues conservatively, so this is hopefully the worst case barring some major failure in the system. So traditionally, we come out better than what I've got forecasted, but I'd rather not have any surprises for the council.
And sewer one, that does include us buying that uh camera system a hundred fifteen thousand.
That is, that's actually under six twelve.
There's six twelve, yeah, so it shows her, it's still a sewer budget.
It's it's sewer budget, we are transferring some out of the sewer fund towards that project, I think about seventy some thousand out of sewer funds towards that. That sewer camera, so.
I can see why you have so much greater. So these are, these are the plug, plugins for the increase.
That's what, that's what Gavin forecasts we're at right now, but.
I really liked this. Have you done it like this before? Kind of.
Kind of, and maybe.
A little bit different.
Yeah, or maybe not explained quite.
No, but it's really, really good, I really like it.
So, I think we have to do at least seven, and I hate to hit them too much more than that, and so. I guess seven to me seems reasonable, uh maybe not as much as we need, but at least reasonable, and so.
Well, one of the things we all need to stand, and and we'll hear it, oh, it's it's high. But all of you are impacted by it. You're all getting these increases, regardless of what anyone says, we all see it.
I was in Monticello here two weeks ago, and apparently they have up theirs fifteen percent.
They've got a huge project too. Yeah, like twenty eight, no, I was fifty.
No, I was only twenty eight million, I think.
It was supposed to come in at twenty two, and they waited so long, waited so long, waited so long. Fifty six? Fifty six? Now, now when you can only, when you can only go up two percent a year in your uh water and sewer rates, but I tell you, it's gonna take a long time to pay that back.
Well, let's hope it gets. Well, again, part of this, part of the challenge we're gonna see is what our new permit's going to require. Uh, because again, as as they try to address nitrates and phosphorus, again, those loadings, the challenge is it comes into our water. Right now, we're doing nitrate reduction in our wells, then we'll back flush, that goes down the wastewater treatment plant. And our plant does not remove the phosphorus, the nitrates, so then it gets pushed out through the river. And that is what's considered a point source pollution area, they can point to our pipe as what's being discharged is for the the nitrates. Well, how are we getting the nitrates? Well, it's coming in from the groundwater, it's coming in from the uh runoff. Now, we can say there's a lot of it coming in from agricultural production, and there is. But some of it's also coming from residential use in town, people like to add their grass, really great fertilizer. Those things are sinking into the ground too, so there's different ways we can address this, but. It is not one silver bullet, it's residential areas need to look at it, and we also need to look at it agriculturally.
And the D N R don't allow you to push back upstream and say, no, it came from here, you know, and so, yeah.
Yeah, cities are easy to pick on. Obviously, so. Questions on the rate increases at all? If you, you'll go through the budgets and you can look through the different thoughts from there. But water is pretty anxious, planetary, I don't think there's any big changes in there.
No, other than the sewer camera we're gonna have budgeted for, um I just wanted to point out a couple sheets. Um, before we get frank on the budget work sheets, I've got this large sheet here, so as we go through line items, we talk about transfers. That was one of the hardest things for me to understand when I started doing this. But we um, we receive money into funds, then we have to transfer it out of funds, so like this bond issue that we're doing right now. I will receive that money into debt service, but then I will transfer it out to subdivision projects. The funds for subdivision projects, um. And then I will transfer, and then I will pay for those subdivision projects out of that, so. Basically, we received the money, it looks like we received it twice, because I received it into the debt service, then I transferred it out, so that's just as an expenditure. Of the debt service, then I transferred into subdivision projects, and then we pay for the subdivision projects out of there, so. So this just goes through all the transfers in, all the transfers out. And shows you what they're for, for the reestimated budget and then for the proposed budget, so as you hit those transfer lines. It just helps clarify, it's an exercise I do for myself, because I have to make sure. Those numbers match, or I get errors on my sheets that I'm trying to do for the state and I can't complete them. The other big sheet is our, is the city's debt, our current debt. So I have it for the current fiscal year, middle comes next fiscal year, and then the following fiscal year. Um, split out by bond issue, the amount due, and then down below where it's paid from, so. The lines down below, so like the two thousand and fourteen is paid for in portion by debt and T I F. Um, I just separate the portion out that is in debt service, so the T I F portion is seventy one thousand seven one five. You can see that number up above and paid from other. Um, just so you see where where we're paying for different items, I also, on the very end, show when the. When the debt is done, so what fiscal year is the final fiscal year, we'll have to budget for it. So, um, again, this is a sheet I use to make sure my my debt is tying out and it ties to the transfers as well. Um, but I thought it might be useful for the council to have it as well to see how. How the debt is structured and how we're paying for it.
And so one of the things you'll wanna, what we're gonna do is is to mention the debt from others, so we're using different funds to pay down the debt. So what is actually applied to the property taxes that we're levying for is the levy, and you can see, you know, that. Total debt column there, kind of where our levy amount has been, and we try to keep that somewhat consistent. Where levy rate doesn't fluctuate a whole lot, and then as we pay debt off, you'll see we'll have some capacity. Uh, we talked about keeping things flat, keeping our payments the same. And so we trade debt off as debt's coming off, we imply no more debt. It's for capital projects, but it's more like an operating expenditure.
So the last column for each fiscal year is the amount that we're levying property taxes for, so the levy amount means, that's what's going in the debt service levy.
And then when you pull up the budget amount, the budget sheets, you can see that dollar amount. The debt service. Um, inbound and in the debt service study, you can tie that seven eighty six, four thirty nine together.
And the debt service, I mean, it's about third from the bottom, seven eighty six, four thirty nine, matches back to the. I was looking at different.
I gotta look every time he's changing.
Aaron, I show up a paper so fast, it's like. But that's how we're tying the numbers back, so we have everything accounted for.
And so you guys know where it's coming from too, so you can understand that that seven eighty six. You know, of the of the bond payments due in fiscal year twenty six, which is one million, three forty one. And some odd dollars, seven hundred and eighty six thousand, four thirty nine is from property taxes, the rest is either water, sewer to. Franchise fees, road use tax. So. Gives you a clearer picture, and those, those paid from other, when we, when we did the bond issues. I mean, we don't, we don't change that each year, when we issued that debt, that was how we. Oh, it was structured, so I have sheets for each bond issue from Spear Financial. That splits it out from even their amortization schedules, this should match pretty closely to that report that Maggie gives us from Spear Financial. So we use that as a double check to make sure we've got our numbers right in there.
What are we looking at, the total debt overall?
Total debt overall. It's like, I think the general. I'm not even gonna think I. My desk, because I've had too many numbers in my head.
This one. In a very bottom rating corner.
Yeah, fifteen forty five.
Fifteen forty five is what is gonna be.
That's what we had proposed for our levy rate, that's ten cents less than what we issued, that's pleasure, it's correct.
And we dropped, what was it, twenty something cents the year from the year prior? So and we're.
We are being forced to reduce our levy rate. The the issue isn't so much our debt service or employee benefits, it is our general fund, the eight dollars and ten cent general fund levy and twenty seven cent. Emergency levy that we used to be aware of use, uh they were combined, and because we're seeing more growth than what was allowed. They're rolling that back.
So we're five percent taxable growth, correct?
Uh, well, that's what we saw, they rolled it back to two point nine five percent allowable growth. That's cute. And it doesn't make a difference whether it's inflation or house values have crept up. Or new values that have come on board because we had a bunch of new construction. Uh, they'll differentiate between them, and this goes into place in the fiscal year twenty nine. What I'm trying to verify, I believe this is correct, we don't see an increase. Valuations decreased, and it does happen, our valuations decrease, we can go back up to eight, ten, well, we can't get any higher than eight.
So at the end of each fiscal year, I'm required to file with the state not standing obligations report, so these numbers as are as of June thirty, twenty twenty four. It can show you, this recaps what we did last fiscal year as far as principal paid and debt issued, but last column's how much debt. Uh, general obligation and. And revenue. It's almost nine months old, this is, this is accurate, except for it does not have that one point three four million. It should say on that obligation, not very big sheet.
Our our vet is, it's a little bit higher than it was last fiscal year, but not much.
No, correct.
And we'll, yeah, we pay, so we pay interest in December one, principal and interest June one of each fiscal year.
Or our debt would have been less had we not had House five seventy eight.
Our levy rate, um, probably would have been less because we've offset some of the other costs. It kept, because the general fund is what covers eight. But we get employee benefits, levy that just is employee benefits, it's structured to that, debt service the same way. What has happened is because we are capped on our growth, we tend to issue more debt to cover, because we can use that levy rate. To cover expenditures that we couldn't.
But if if we would have been levy to drop less, we wouldn't have as much debt as we have, so it's hard to pay off the debt when we can't grow.
Yeah, debt service is fine, we can grow there, but.
But like things that we used to be able to include in the budget, you know, we're not having to do it this year, but like that eighty five thousand dollar squad car. There have been years where we've had to do like a short-term borrowing, which means like a one-year note where we've been able to utilize the debt service. And basically done a payoff in one year from debt service, because our general fund didn't have capacity. Um, to to pay for that equipment, so when they do limit the general fund growth, it does live in our ability to to purchase equipment from that. And have to look at alternative means to do it, this year we'll be able to do it from the general fund. But there were have been years where we've had cuts and haven't been able to, so on this big sheet. Again, I, I'll go back to that with the sheet I just handed out to you about the debt. Um, so like this year, the first, the very first column, after it talks about bond issue, this year we'll be paying off. Um, total geo debt, one million, two hundred and five thousand in general obligation debt. That's the, the line that right here shows how much we're paying off. So that would have re- reduced that six, three, four, zero. Of our ending fund balance on the stat sheet by one point two, however we've issued one, three, four, so. Our debt will go up a little bit, but we're gonna be by about one hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, and we're gonna pay up one point one six million next year.
So, um.
Well, and we do have a bond that dropped off, the two thousand seventeen one dropped off, the two thousand twenty seven, so that brings a gap.
The principal outstanding in uh June of twenty three. Uh, that kind of sewer water one, but it was six point eight. And this year, on June thirtieth, it was six point three, so that's five hundred thousand dollars plus.
Yeah, and we issued seven hundred thousand dollars worth of debt during that, that year, that was for the first phase of Hill Brands. So.
If this state would let us grow like we could, we'd be joking, pay things off better. It's kind of like going to work and boss down, you get forty hours and that's it, and we're not.
So then what's left for the council is this big packet. Uh, this is every single line item number for the city, separated by the fund. So the first through the numbers of all the numbers on these sheets is the fund. Correlates back to this sheet here, so zero, zero, one is general fund. If you ever need help kind of figuring out which fund you're dealing with, so the general fund. Budget goes on for thirty pages, that's your first grouping here, and it's sorted by department. Revenues first, then expenditures, so it starts with police. Then fire, you know, controls, I don't know how much you'd want to go into detail on these. Um, but you can look back then to to this sheet and see the total general fund expenditures, total general fund revenues. For reestimated for this fiscal year. for reestimated for this fiscal year, and then projected for, or budgeted for next fiscal year. And then our projected ending fund balance. Then, uh, most of this, after those thirty sheets, and you have forty six sheets, which ba- basically go through all the other funds that are listed on here. It's just general fund has a lot more departments in it, so it, it turns better if I split it out from our current system. And really, not much has been changed since you, you all met with the department heads. What, what has happened is I've gone through and looked at where they're at, um. Because it's basically, on these worksheets, it's the last three, the last four and three columns you wanna look at on these sheets. Um, because the fourth from the right is the twenty four, twenty five total budget, that was the original budget. Then you have the twenty four, twenty five activity, so that shows what we've spent or what we've brought in as of January thirty first. The date the report was run is up there at the top. So then we look at that to come up with what we're proposing for the reestimated, which is the second from last, um, then the twenty five, twenty six for total budget. So what I've been doing is kind of going through and looking at the reestimated versus the twenty four, twenty five activity to make sure we've, we've forecasted adequately in those, um, between those two lines compared to what was budgeted. Um, so there's been a few tweaks where I've had to adjust maybe some things down or up, try and keep them relatively the same. Or reduce where I could ensure that, you know, try and maximize what, what we're gonna see for ending fund balances. And based on discussions we've had, so. So the general fund is about the same. The one thing I did do on the parks budget, which parks is on page eleven of thirty, no, that's library page. Page thirteen of thirty was that we had bomb park in, in there under the capital improvements. That was just gonna be really hard on our general fund, so I moved that to the, um, part of improvement fund, which is fund one forty six. And that's gonna be on page. Page fif- sixteen and forty six. I budgeted that expenditure there. The park improvement fund gets forty five percent of the hotel motel taxes that we received in. And that fund, um, it started the fiscal year with a balance of ninety six, but they're taking in fifty seven thousand is what we're forecasting in, um, hotel motel taxes and interest. So they finished out the year at a hundred and forty two, so they had capacity in that park improvement fund to do the bomb park shelter. So I moved the bomb park shelter to fund the water improvements, um, to pay for it out of there.
And did we lose one of our hotels as normal hotel?
It's up for sale right now.
But that's someone that's going to the extended state potentially, possibly.
Possibly.
But that was, that, don't they still have to pay a hotel motel tax of some sort?
Extended state, it's over thirty days, they don't pay tax.
What are the, all these, uh, new, uh, Air G M Bs we have in town?
They're, they are supposed to pay the, pay into that.
Do they have to register with the city to make sure?
No, the city.
But the state would.
Because they don't pay lodging taxes and all of that.
And if they don't.
We don't necessarily know. I mean, I don't have the ways to go through it.
That's what, uh, that's what our upper government should be focusing on is the Air G M Bs and what it does to the housing market and how they run.
Exactly, yeah.
Everything they're supposed to be doing in.
Yeah, I'm not certain the data will impact how much we get in hotel motel too much. It seems like, uh, the one next to, um, Pizza Ranch and then Cobblestone seem to be the.
The ones.
The ones that see the most traffic. Um, so, and, and we probably will see a little bit, but I don't just.
The other thing that we did on the parks budget is we pulled out the tram park, excuse me, tarot park forward, that fifty thousand. I don't think that we're in dire need to get that put in. That our budget is looking like we needed to save it, we can start planning for it and keep it on.
So we still have it listed on the budget, it's one of those things where if it goes out, we're gonna have to replace it. We didn't put it in the budget, but we will have to amend if it, if it goes out, we're gonna have to do it.
So we're trying to keep our general fund budget level to a certain standard.
So the council just needs to be aware that it, that is one that is out there that, that we may have to take action on sooner rather than later.
I, I don't know that it's desperate, we need to do it this summer. It is something we need to take care of, I understand it, it's gonna come up.
It's coming, but we're open, it's not coming too soon.
Well, it's no different than a water break.
Correct.
You know, if we get a water break, it's unexpected, but.
Speaking of water breaks, from young on the gold, so is this the only one we have, as many we've had in the last year and a half that have been on.
Typically about a dozen to fifteen a year.
Really?
Yeah, we have one in Thursday on Winslow Drive.
Um, back to the tarot park over, I'd always like to see its approach, the tarot trust about helping to cover that cost, because there is money. It's traditionally been not the easiest thing to get funds from the tarot trust, but I would like us to see it, I'd like to see us at least request funding from there to help with this project.
That's what we're lost.
So we had to that.
G M B does, okay. We used to have, Joe, we will use to handle it, and it was, it was easier to discuss projects with Joe or local, somebody here. It's not been as easy, but I do think it's worth pursuing if we get to that point where we are needing to do it.
Yep.
It's.
If nothing else, at least you're forcing to sign on.
Yeah, yeah, we, we at least requested.
And you, and you don't want to be asked.
Yeah. So, I don't know, if you wanna just take things and look through them and let us know if you have questions. Each one is identified, like each sheet, once you get our general fund, is identified at the top with the fund number and the name. That you can tie back then to this, the sheet here. As you're going through, you'll see the transfers in and out, you can use that sheet that I have given you to, to, to show you where, um, both the transfers are going to, where they're going to, where they're coming from, um, to get to those numbers. And then, you know, the kind of the last one is the sheets, when we talked about it in the last budget work session. This is what we're building that proposed levy off of, so, um, and that number shouldn't change with the. No, it won't, it won't change, because we've, we've maximized here what we can get from the general fund. Just, um, from the general levy, so this is pretty much where it will be if the council's okay with this, what we've got proposed. Um, this is what we'll come back with on March third, um, to, to such a public hearing, um, so. Yeah, I know, it's happening fast, so I guess I would, I would ask the council. I know it's a lot of papers, but if, as you look through this, if you notice something or have questions on anything, let me know sooner rather than later, so I can make adjustments or corrections if we need. Yeah, let's answer questions, um, you know, Tim and I both reviewed a couple of times, but it's a lot of numbers, so another set of eyes never hurts to go through it and look, and all questions are welcome on, on the numbers in there. Because it's, it's a lot of information too.
Did you took any help? The pet licenses won't be in good anymore?
I'm hoping nothing, let's see them as is, so.
Yeah, there, there is another proposal in the legislature to limit us being able to license pets or charge for.
We can license them, but we can't charge them, so I did leave the revenue in there, but.
Well, maybe we should have put in a toll road, so that way we could try and make some money.
Uh, they would pose that too.
I'm sure they would.
Are there, there's something else we can call the pet license fee to get around that?
It's.
Lodging.
It's just getting harder and harder and harder to make the checkbook balance, so to say.
We're reliant on property taxes sometimes, because we're not getting this state income that we used to get. They're shutting down anything we could do as far as generating revenue some other ways, some of the means. And so hamstringing us to the point of.
You know, we lost Ben Cringe, I text you about one sheet that shows that even though we're seeing fifty thousand.
I don't have that sheet.
It's not actually fifty thousand, because we're seeing a reduction in the commercial and the tier.
Yes, so, so the fifty six thousand dollars, we saw an increase in revenue on property tax rates. We're losing over fifteen thousand dollars, because the state is not backfilling us with what they had before, so. Right now, we, we give about two hundred thousand dollars from the state, but that's what we're projecting for this next fiscal year. But we know that's going to win. They're hoping we can outgrow that.
By capping our.
Yes. Uh, it's, it's prospering.
Uh, on, on the side of the taxpayer, it's nice to see that they're crunching down on that kind of stuff. But then you also want to have a good water plant, you wanna have your streets plowed, you want good streets, and you want nice parks, and it all costs money. And then we have to figure out how we're gonna do that with less money.
Well, what's gonna happen is they're gonna put all these cities into the county.
And then the county.
And then the county's gonna have to start raising, you know, because they aren't putting these restrictions on counties. They're only putting the restrictions on the cities.
The, the counties have got their restrictions.
But not like we have.
Bigger base, bigger base tour.
Their general base seek and their law base.
The, the challenge here is, I think they discount the local elections. You guys were elected to represent your people, to make the town move forward. And they're putting hamstrings on her, because they don't think you know what you're doing to make the right decisions.
Well, and you're paying these property taxes that you're subbing, and these utilities.
They haven't messed with the formula since the Culver administration. They need to reevaluate how they do the formula for what they do with these properties taxes. They need to look at how it's being valued. We can't continue to see the stuff keep going up like it is. It's, I mean, it's because of the values. And yes, it costs more to build it, but that doesn't mean that it should double in price in five years. You know, that's stupid. That's where they need to be working out, because that's what makes everything else go up.
What makes me laugh, and also those that don't believe in the small local governments to make the right decisions, have the same education levels as the ones I've hired. There's no criteria.
And, and you're the most easily accessible, um, form of government too, because people see you at Fairwood, they see you at Walmart, you know, you can get the questions at work, you know. So.
That's why I don't work in Manchester anymore.
So, this is the long version, I will have my short version, but Mary Ann has in front of her. My summary for the public to see what's going on, the hits the highlights. Yeah, I'll have that finished up, uh, when we get ready to go, uh, with the public information.
Okay, okay.
Thanks for everything you guys do.
You're still talking to each other.
Yes, she's, we, we've had a pretty decent.
I mean, there's not that much left to argue.
I know, there really is.
We're pretty much said.
Pretty soon, there's gonna be a liquor bottle in the.
It says there isn't.
Okay, Brian, did you have anything else to?
Uh, you may see activity here on City Hall, uh, Horizon is looking to put their antenna up on City Hall.
Finally.
Starting April first, is what it sounds like, that we, right? So we'll get some revenue off of that, well, over fourteen thousand dollars a year, starting this first year.
Started doing that, how many?
Well, the lease agreement was dated.
Sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen. With the city, and they haven't done anything.
Hey, until they install. So we'll start seeing that, uh, activity, so that, that'll be at least the weather. Allegedly, I haven't seen the contractors, well, we, we did walk through the contractors, so they get their bids out, but bids come back too high, they may say no too.
Linda, do you have anything? Not tonight, okay, Mary, or Joe, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
The only thing I got is something I brought to Tim, uh, before we got here. I've been getting a lot of complaints from homeowners around the high school on Liberty Street about going to inside parking there during school events, they can't get out of their driveways, so just something to kind of throw out there.
Uh, I should be here next Monday, but Tuesday I'm having some hand and arm surgery done, so I think I need a Monday night. Unless my wife says it not, so I don't know.
Yeah, you can fast and be here at the meeting, that's what I told her, so I'm just doing what I'm told. And then there is training coming up, uh, effective habits of the council's, uh, back alliance putting that on down. And Linda, I've got you signed up. I sent the email out if you're interested, it's a pre-training.
I was.
It'll be at the, uh, decent office.
E C I A is putting it on, right?
Yeah, E C I A is putting it on. Is it on the twenty fifth?
Yes.
Okay, the five thirty. May dinner served and then.
I will be in Cancun next week, I leave Friday, so I will be gone next week. Um, so, you know, cover for me. Um, I just wanted also to let you know that the retailers, um, Kurt Heim sent me an email this afternoon that they are going to be having their meeting on Wednesday night this night. I, they invited us if we wanted to attend, and it's this week, the nineteenth, I just got the email today. Um, it's the, at five fifteen at the bowling alley, or the alley it's called. Um, used to be Captain Teal's, so if you wanna attend, we're welcome to, I think. Yeah, I can't have a.
We can post it.
Okay.
Do we just, I don't wanna take any personal action, it's just.
It's at five fifteen.
I won't be there. I won't be, I'll be back in town with you.
Brian. Two or, or, or less.
I told Mike to be there for maybe thirty minutes, and then I haven't been meeting.
We'll get you your own car, lights.
I've seen them behind me and up in my.
So anyway, um, did you have anything else in here, Karen? Okay. All right, um, with that, I'll take a motion from Linda and a second for Mary Ann to adjourn, and we'll adjourn.